We'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Monday, July 19th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Laumann.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Councilmember O'Brien wishes to make some comments under Community Pride. Additional comments or additions or deletions?
Move to approve.
Most have been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented with one addition under Community Pride, Councilmember O'Brien. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, that motion does carry. Consent items? Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we are for council's approval, the city council minutes of July 6th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of June 28th, planning commission minutes of June 30th, planning commission minutes of July 7th, accounts payable report for June 25 through July 8, application for Municipal Utilities Commission of Sean Maskey, a resolution to acknowledge donations for second quarter of 2021, miscellaneous finance reports, and for council's acceptance, the building report for the month of June 2021.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Most have been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Laumann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. I would be amiss if I did not welcome our new city administrator, Ms. Valiant, here tonight. After we get through our basic introduction stuff, I just wanted to reach out and congratulate you. I know you've had a very busy day, as I know it started early this morning, and I know you've been working hard all day, meeting with staff, and I think towards the end of the agenda, we'll have an opportunity for you to make some comments. But on behalf of the mayor's office, I'm very pleased that you're with us. We have some very exciting times, and we look forward to your leadership and your vision for our community. So, thanks for being on board. And tomorrow, Ms. Valiant and I will be on open mic for the first part of the show, and then after that, I'll be on the second part, but Leslie has some other things that she has to take care of at the second portion. So if you wonder why she's only on for the first part, it's that she had some other commitments prior. So, Leslie, I don't know if you want to make any comments now or wait till the end?
I think I'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, though. I appreciate the chance. The opportunity is wonderful.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next, we have a public hearing establishing TIF district and approve the TIF plan development agreement for Sweet Levin Ridgewater site, and I'll call on Dr. Ramstead for introductory comments. This time, I'll open the public hearing. Dr. Ramstead.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. For your consideration, as a proposed 15-year tax increment financing district for AEHN, otherwise known as Sweet Levin, it's a multifamily housing project to be located at 1209 24th Street Northwest in Wilmer, which is across from Ridgewater College. The preliminary TIF plan is based on the anticipated commencement of construction in 2021. The total project costs are about $9.3 million, and the project will use existing infrastructure. Staff have been working with AEHN LLC to create a mutually agreeable management maintenance plan to address city concerns related to maintenance and snow removal, which is attached in your packet. The TIF is ultimately granted to support this project and any other issues I may find with environmental and site preparation. A maintenance plan is going to be incorporated, or is incorporated, into the TIF development agreement as one of the conditions the developer must comply with on a continuing basis for all properties it owns within the city limits of Wilmer. If any of those properties has a citation at the time that a TIF increment is due, that will be withheld until the citation is brought into compliance. In addition, the TIF development agreement has been updated by the city attorney Scott to strengthen conditions that the county assessor's property evaluation may not be challenged for 10 years. And with that, staff is seeking two motions this evening, and with the mayor's permission, I'll read those.
Please do.
The first is to adopt a resolution establishing a tax increment tax district named Sweet Levin Ridgewater Site within municipal district number two and approving the tax increment financing plan relating thereto. The second motion is to adopt a resolution approving the tax increment development agreement with AEHN and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the same on the city's behalf.
Thank you.
We also have with us Tom Dennoy from Baker Tilly, and I would appreciate if he could maybe give you an overview of TIF and answer some questions related to this particular deal.
That would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramstead, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Tom Dennoy. I am with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. We are the city's financial advisor on this project. We prepared the draft TIF plan that is before you. That includes all the assumptions as it relates to the project, as well as a summary memorandum that outlines the basis for why you may choose to make this decision and the ultimate need or potential need for the use of tax increment financing, which is commonly referred to as the "but-for" finding. There's a little bit of a PowerPoint in front of you. I don't think I'll go through all of it. I think everybody's probably familiar with the project. Seventy-two units, about $3.7 million, or $9.7 million, or, excuse me, $9.3 million in total project costs. The TIF district is eligible to be created because it's a proposed housing district. So with a housing district, the eligibility for the use of TIF is contingent upon the development that is created within that site. In order for that project to be eligible to be created within a housing TIF district, it has to set aside a portion of the units for people of certain income thresholds. So as it relates to housing districts, there's two standards that can be met. Either 20% of the units have to be set aside for persons with incomes of equal to or less than 50% of the area median income, or in the case, the test that this development is seeking to make or would be required to meet as it relates to the qualification of a TIF district would be that 40% of the units are set aside for persons with incomes equal to or less than 60% of the area median income. So in this case, the developer is intending to meet that 40% threshold. Within the TIF plan, we have laid out all the assumptions that were used to create that future projected tax increment revenue. So ultimately, that revenue is a function of the anticipated market value of the project post-completion and the property taxes that would be generated by the project post-completion. So the tax increment revenue is simply put, the future tax dollars or a portion of the future tax dollars that will be paid by the project will be captured as tax increment revenue by the city redirected back to, or by the county redirected back to the city, and then a portion of those dollars, anticipated to be 90% of the TIF dollars, would be repaid to the developer against a pay-as-you-go note that would reimburse them for the costs that they would incur upfront. This is what's known as a pay-as-you-go TIF district. The developer is going to incur all the costs out of pocket themselves, and they're going to be reimbursed on a pay-as-you-go basis to the extent that the revenue is generated by the TIF district. Ultimately, the TIF district revenue projections that are included in the TIF plan are assumptions. They're based on future valuations and future tax rates. If those values come in less or the TIF revenue is less than projected, the city has zero obligation to make up any difference between what is in the plan and what is generated. All of that risk of future TIF revenue projection is on the developer's shoulders. It's a pay-as-you-go TIF. That's why we structured the majority of deals within the state on a pay-as-you-go basis, because it puts that future risk on the developer. If the valuation comes in at a lower amount than what was used in the TIF plan, the TIF revenue would be less, and the developer would be reimbursed less. So, all of that risk is on the developer's shoulders. The city's only obligation is, to the extent that the project is in compliance with the development agreement, is to reimburse the developer from 90% of the tax increment revenue that it has generated. As a proportion of the total amount of taxes that would still be paid by the property, TIF only accounts for a portion of that. There is a portion of the taxes that are ineligible to be generated or captured as tax increment revenue. The school district and any county referendum market value taxes are outside the TIF district and would provide an immediate benefit to the school district in terms of additional tax base for market value-based taxes. So only a portion of the tax dollars are even eligible to be generated as TIF or captured as TIF, and then only 90% of what is captured as TIF would be eligible to be repaid to the developer to reimburse the costs they incurred upfront. So that future tax increment revenue is ultimately the future taxes that the project's going to be paid. It's not money that's already being paid within the city. It's not coming out of the general tax base. It's that future tax revenue that would be generated by the use and the creation of the tax increment district, which is where the "but-for" finding comes in. So when you create a TIF district, you want to make the finding that the proposed project or development within the district would not occur but for the use of TIF. That's kind of the fundamental finding that allows, is what legislature allows for TIF districts to be created within the state. It's the idea that the project that is occurring would not have occurred but for the assistance, so therefore, the revenue that's being captured is capable of being captured because it wouldn't have been available otherwise, because but for the redirection of that revenue, the project would have happened. So that "but-for" question is a bit kind of esoteric, but there's a way that we can actually answer it in a subjective manner. So one of the things that was required as part of the application was a full financial performer for the development that outlined their anticipated budget, the future revenues, the future expenses, so that we can really make that "but-for" finding from a financial standpoint. We can look at the potential rate of return to the project with and without the requested assistance. If the project appears to be unfeasible without the requested assistance, that allows us to make that find that but for the assistance, the project would not be financially feasible and therefore would be unlikely to occur. So in the summary memo, I outline the potential rate of return to the developer without the requested assistance, which is about 4.8%. Compared to a national benchmark average that we use, that benchmark, the Price Waterhouse Cooper Survey identifies a return threshold of 6.83% as what's typically sought by developers. So we know that the project without assistance falls significantly below that. So that tells us the project would be unlikely to occur but for the use of the tax increment financing. The other thing that that tells us is we can also evaluate the rate of return with assistance. So how does the use of TIF impact the feasibility of the project? In this case, it takes it from a 4.8% return to a 5.87% return. So what that tells us is that we're not over-incentivizing the project. We want to make sure with TIF that we're, A, only using it for projects where it's necessary, and B, we're not overpaying for those projects with the amount of TIF that we're using. So this return analysis allows us to answer both those questions, that the project would not occur but for the requested assistance, and that the amount that's being requested or provided is reasonable. So I think with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Ramstead?
One thing I would like to emphasize is that this does not impact existing taxes whatsoever. The $3 million in land and building values that are there now will continue to provide tax revenue to the school board, county, and to the city. This is like layaway. We're getting the housing now, and we're getting the tax money later. So, TIF is a great incentive to get the development that we seek, and we're just postponing the taxes for a later time. I'm glad to see that Aaron Bachman was here. Would you mind if he stepped up and said a few words of support?
He chose to, that'd be fine. Mr. Bachman. Mr. Bachman is the EDC Director for the City of Wilmer and Canoe Lake County. Mr. Bachman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Aaron Bachman with EDC. A couple of observations that I have in terms of this particular project and in general housing. This represents a $9.3 million investment into the community. That's, I think, positive. I think this is a perfect example of an infill project that is beneficial for the community. If you think about some other projects we've had, such as unique opportunities on CR5, for example, literally, the city and the county had to add a turn lane that has a certain cost to it. There had to be various utilities brought to the site. That's not the case here. There's roads, water, and sewer already to the site. It's simply an infill project. That's beneficial. You're taking advantage of the investment that you all have made already, the city has already made. So that's, I think, another positive to think about. Also, in terms of affordable, these are affordable units. We continue. You know, the housing shortage has not subsided. The most recent report that I received a couple of days ago from June indicates that we continue to be very tight on housing. We're down to about 1.7 months of inventory for single-family homes and equally tight on, under 3% for rental. It is a tight market. The other thing I would say, a fourth observation, is that we want to encourage young people to live in this community. If you look at the average, the median age for people in the state of Minnesota, it's 38. Here in Wilmer, it's 34. We have a relatively young population. We have a new city administrator, and you take a look at the city of Spicer, for example, average median age 47. We want to encourage young people to live and thrive here. So, those are the observations I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bachman. Appreciate that. Dr. Ramstead, additional comments?
Mr. Mayor, council?
No, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. If you'd all stand by for any comments that might come. Would appreciate that. Mr. Olson is here as well. Mr. Olson, did you wish to make any comments?
I'm just happy to be part of this. I'm here for questions.
Thank you. With that, we'll open up the public hearing for the public, and we have Ms. Anderson, who is here, who wishes to speak to the council. Ms. Anderson, I'll just do introductory, some comments from the mayor's office. So what we're looking at here is we're looking at 72 units and a $9.3 million investment within our community, and they're looking for some tax benefits to allow that project to happen. And as the individual from Baker Tilly explained to us, the "but-for" test is if we did not do this funding, then these new buildings would not be able to be built. So that's the premise of our meeting, and I know that you have some comments in regards to the maintenance.
Yes.
So, please state your name. And, Ms. Thompson, do you need her address as well, or just name? Is that good enough?
Just if she's from Wilmer or outside Wilmer.
Okay. So, just if you tell us if your name, first name, last name, and then if you reside within the city of Wilmer.
My name is Jamie Joy Anderson, and I do live in Wilmer.
Thank you. Go ahead with your comments.
I am grateful that this meeting happened today. I spent the weekend in my vehicle. I am a 44-year-old disabled female, and my family lives in Iowa. There have been bedbugs and cockroach problems in my building. They know where they're coming from. If we build the new buildings, it will absolutely get all of the residents out of that building. The mold problem, I have a crack in the foundation in my bedroom. I have a lot of health problems. One is COPD. I had a job and could not get rid of my pneumonia and found that I was sleeping eight inches from black mold. I ended up in the ER several times before this was found. Their solution was to give me a fan to take care of the problem. Since then, I currently still have bedbug bites on me. I am 44 years old, have lived in every situation known, including homeless, and have never seen a bedbug or a cockroach ever. I had to look it up. This is infesting all of our apartments because we are on water heat, which means there is a connection to every apartment. This weekend, I made a phone call to the maintenance crying at 10:00 to 11:00 p.m. I have to sleep in my car Saturday and Sunday night. They spoke to me, telling me Monday morning, somebody would be calling me or coming to my apartment. 5:00 p.m., not one call, not one show. I hung notes on my neighbors' doors, telling them, "Please check your apartments. There have been cockroaches and bub bugs in mine, and they are not getting rid of them." I walked out of my apartment when I found out that this meeting was being held today, and this is one of the topics being presented. I got a note on my door from one of my neighbors, and I would like to read it to you. Hi, Joy, I go by my own name. Hi, Joy, thank you for your note. We did start to notice roaches lately. Thankful to you. We went through our things and found bedbugs. I have called the office and left a message. They did not answer. Any tips? We are young adults about to be parents. This is an issue that needs absolute immediate attention. We have young children. I called the city building inspector. I have been on the phone all day today with everybody that I can contact to take care of this problem. I have bedbug bites currently still on me from two and a half months ago. It is not getting taken care of. If we build this new buildings, we can all save the innocent children, we can save families from dealing with this kind of issue, and we can shut down these apartments that are not being maintained, taken care of at all. I would love for any one of you to take a basket of your laundry, walk into the laundry room that I have to use, and actually do your laundry in there. I know the schedules. That is what I do. I sit at home. I'm a writer, and I do art. All I do is keep track of everything. Tuesdays, it is lawn day, and it's also cleaning day. I can guarantee you that the laundry rooms have never been clean. I had my own business for six years cleaning homes, and I can tell you that none of you would do a basket of laundry in the laundry room that I am subjected to. I hope that something gets done so that we can move these people. I'm tired of sleeping in my car and paying rent and having nobody answer my calls.
So, Ms. Anderson, what I'm hearing you say is that you're in favor of the TIF district because it would add additional housing?
Absolutely. It would add additional housing, get rid of this kind of housing that we are literally subjected to, low income. I'm on disability. I'm a fixed income. Okay? I have health issues. You can't see that, and I know a lot of people don't see me as disabled. I am able to speak. I'm able to walk currently, but I have major health issues, and we need to take care of this. We need some kind of housing available that is healthy, clean, and acceptable for everybody, and no one has to sleep in their cars. No one has to be like me. I have $14 in my account because I am on a fixed income and have to pay my full rent. I cannot afford to go to a motel. I do not have family that is even relatively close to me, and I am basically stuck, and I have no choice. So I really hope that something can get done. Maybe me speaking here today will show that this is a serious problem for more people than we realize, and there's a lot of people hurting that have no choice, that are like me, that I don't have anywhere to go. Okay? I'm single. I'm new to this area, and I don't know anyone. I had to quit my job because of the mold problem, because I was working part-time at Subway, and I couldn't do it because I was in the ER with pneumonia, and things aren't getting taken care of.
Thank you very much for your comments. I do appreciate it. Thank you. Dr. Ramstead, fellow comments?
That was very touching and actually very informative. If you would call my office or give me your number and name afterwards, I'll ask somebody to contact you. We are working on a multi-pronged effort to address blight in Wilmer, and it is going to be a system that is not a silver bullet. It's going to be multiple things, and this condition that we are putting in the TIF agreement is one of those components. And, you know, this one actually encumbers 23% of all the housing in Wilmer. We have about 3,000 units in Wilmer. This is 700. So if a couple of developers come in to have housing portfolios, we, pretty in quick order, would have the lion's share of rental housing underneath this tutelage and be able to have a lot of leverage with property maintenance. So I think it's an important step to introduce new housing, expand housing, allows growth, but also provide housing opportunities for the person that just spoke.
Thank you. Additional comments from the public or questions from the public? Seeing and hearing now, I am going to close the public portion of the meeting, and as I close that, Ms. Anderson, I want to thank you for your comments. Your comments were very touching, very personal, and very relevant to the subject matter at hand. We did discuss this a little bit at our last council meeting on the maintenance side of things, and so, as Dr. Ramstead had stated, he would like to make contact with you to address the concerns you have. But more importantly, just want you to know that your voice is heard, your voice is valued, and you are a valued citizen within the city of Wilmer, and we're really glad you're here. So thank you. Thanks for your bold comments tonight. So with that, I'll move over to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to establish the tax increment finance district.
Second. Most have been made and seconded to establish the tax increment financing district for the approval of the development agreement with Sweet Levin Ridgewater Site. Council, discussion? Councilmember Laumann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to double down on the comments that were just made and the profound statements that we kind of heard here tonight. We talk a lot about things like finances, and we talk a lot about issues like housing, and I feel like this puts a real personal touch on what goes back to the very heart of the issue, and it's not always just business, it's people. And what we're trying to do in this community is have a community established that can grow and can thrive and is full of opportunity. But in order to do that, we got to hit the basics, and that means human decency, health and safety. And there are a lot of people that make a lot of arguments against government subsidy, against programs like TIF and tax abatement and whatnot. And I think this is an excellent time to highlight just how these programs can be beneficial to communities like ours and other communities. We can do these things. We can create an atmosphere where a rising tide floats all ships. We can increase the quality of our housing and therefore increasing competition amongst other properties and encouraging other properties and creating new systems and drawing attention to the various other problems and issues that may exist. I also want to thank Baker Tilly for giving a very well-rounded synopsis of what TIF is and its intended purpose, and that is not just the city giving away tax dollars. We're not just giving out free money. That's not the way it works. This is to encourage expanded growth and development. And I guess our hope, and my personal hope, is that these programs will do just that and answer, or be part of an answer, to a much larger issue, and then along with the city and various city departments, that we can take a multi-pronged approach. I think that was a good way of putting it, at tackling these issues. And, you know, as was also mentioned, there is no one magic cure, but there are a whole different combination of things that I think we all really want to do our best job at trying to do. So I'm very thankful that we have entities like Baker Tilly to help run the numbers and make sure that it's all financially sound. Our planning and development department, that's able to spend extensive time going over these things, as well as the developer, willing to not only step up to the table with a project, but to sit down and actually discuss the concerns that we have as a community and discuss some of the hardball issues. And these are it. We heard them tonight. I mean, that's hardcore stuff, people sleeping in their vehicles because of health issues. And so if this is a step that we can take in order to try to head this ship in the right direction, I think it's a wise step to take. That's my own personal opinion, so I'm supportive of the motion, but also interested in the discussion. Thank you.
Just go comments from council. Councilmember O'Brien?
First of all, what was the intention of TIF to begin with when it was originated and instituted? Was it business, or was it apartments?
There are a number of different ways within which TIF districts can be created. Some of them depend on the type of project that is being built. Those are the housing districts, so it's the end use of the project, as well as economic development districts, which are, again, based on the end use, which is related development districts, which are, again, based on the end use, which is related to manufacturing, warehouse, and distribution-type facilities. There's also the ability to create TIF districts based on the current condition of the property. In those cases, those are redevelopment and renewal and renovation districts where you have a site that is, contains occupied parcels that also include structurally substandard buildings. So the legislation, and I can't remember which one, and I guess I don't even know, it probably predates me, which authority came first, but within the existing state statute, there are basically four different ways you can create a district. Housing and economic development are based on the end use of the property. Redevelopment, renewal, and renovation and soils districts are based on the current condition of the property. So statute allows for multiple reasons why you could create a TIF district.
The other question I have, is there a certain number of TIF that you can have in a community or in an area? Are we restricted that way?
There is with tax abatement. There is a maximum amount that could be tax abated each year. I don't actually know or believe that there is a specific cap on the amount of TIF districts a city could have. But obviously, at some point, you don't want to over-incentivize every project, and ultimately not every project would require incentives. So you want to make sure that you're being judicious and reasonable in the use of tax increment financing, which the city has done in part by having a city policy that limits the duration of districts to only 15 years. Housing TIF districts and redevelopment TIF districts can be in duration for up to 26 years in total. So this district is actually proposed to be only a 15-year district, which is significantly shorter than the maximum statutory duration. That helps the project get back on the general tax rolls to the benefit of all the taxpayers.
Is there a set number on the number of TIF that a certain business or corporation can have in a community?
No, not that I'm aware of, that there's any specific requirement as it relates to that.
There isn't any?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Ramsden, two weeks ago, you had stated that the payback on this was going to be, you thought, less than the 15 years. I thought it was 12-something. But you recall what you had stated? Because I thought they were asking for 15, but you thought it would come in under that. Is that correct?
Well, I think I was saying there's a potential. If the, you know, if the increment is higher, we pay it off sooner, and the TIF district is terminated earlier. If it doesn't prove out and the funds are lower, and it goes all the way to the 15 years, and we don't hit that 1.5 million figure at that point, we don't owe any money beyond that because it's pay-as-you-go. So there's no commitment either way.
So when we drafted the TIF plan, we're obviously using assumptions and projecting future tax revenues. So one of the things that we tend to do is not assume any inflation in market values. Because if we don't assume any inflation, it's likely to occur. And that's where you're, you know, if the values are hit that were proposed within the TIF plan, if that level of development market value occurs, but then inflation occurs beyond that, that's where that shrinking of the term is going to come in. So if it's set at 15 years, assume to be the repayment period with no inflation. If market value inflation occurs, which historically it does, that's going to start shrinking that term to something less than 15 years. But that is ultimately dependent on the market value that is actually created and assessed by the county. So if the market value comes in less, that is unlikely to occur. But again, it's only capped at the 15-year period. There's no way it can go beyond that per the TIF plan and the development agreement that is in front of you.
Councilmember O'Brien, did you get your questions answered there?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in response to Councilmember O'Brien, the city of Wilmer never did residential projects before it started the last four or five years.
Okay.
It was always industrial.
That's what I was assuming, yes.
Yep. One other question. I don't know if this is the right time or the next one. Come up here, Dr. Ramsden. Okay, so Ms. Anderson?
Ms. Anderson.
Okay. So person does have bedbugs, cockroaches. If they move into another property, how do you screen them to make sure their furniture, their belongings do not move with them?
Right.
So how do we?
Well, you know, as many of you know, I worked for HUD for well over a decade, and bedbugs is a major, major issue with housing. And it's a tough thing to address. You're absolutely right. You fumigate, but screening tenants is completely up to the owners and landlords. And it's a very tough, it's almost next to impossible to know whether, you know, it might be in the baggage, it might be in the carpets, a variety of things when they move to other locations. So just being persistent and trying to stay on top of it is really the only thing you can do. And in this particular instance, if that is the case, we would cite it and require the owner to fumigate all places where it exists. So.
Because I know when we had the downtown hot water heating system, you'd go in the auditorium and take a shower after basketball, and you turn the lights on, you could see the cockroaches running. So now that it's been dismantled, hopefully the downtown area will be a little bit better so we don't have cockroach infestation.
Right. And inspecting is an issue. You know, it's a self-determined thing, whether you enter and because you can get it on your shoes and take it with you home. So even the inspectors need to be careful and use their judgment when they're inspecting these properties.
Thank you.
Yep. Just some comments or questions from council. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a quick note to that point. I was doing a little bit of research regarding state of Minnesota TIF plans regarding residential multifamily housing. And I did read, maybe a little bit proverbial, whatever, neat article about Minneapolis and the housing down Hiawatha Avenue and what's taken place since the light rail. We all remember when the light rail first started, it was decades ago. But at the same time, they were trying to take a multi-pronged approach on how to increase the value of properties. They were trying to increase the supply of housing. And most importantly, they were going after the quality of the housing, and they did. Of course, it's, you know, city of Minneapolis, so they got a lot of money to do a lot of studies and a lot of research. And they kind of all came to the same conclusion as well, that implementing whatever plans that they could by increasing the new construction, the new development, what it did is it raised the overall quality of all the facilities in the area. Because as the supply was expanded and it was a higher-quality supply, then came the ebb and the flow of the marketability. So as the marketability kind of opened up a little bit, the population would tend to gravitate towards the newer, nicer complexes. And then the owners and the landlords of the other rental properties then were inspired to clean up their properties so that they could stay market-competitive. And so it's kind of a really neat, like a 20-year study of how they've gone about cleaning up multifamily housing in one general area and how they use things like TIF financing. And it was successful. And so it's kind of my hope that taking steps like this will kind of work the same way. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Brien again.
Only one question I have is why does stuff like this go on that she's talking about? I mean, who is in charge? Who should be contacted? If we hear this from somebody else, who should we contact? I mean, whoever owns this place, whoever manages this place should be shut down.
Typically, you know, our inspectors are contacted with complaint, or better yet is to call the health department. But they're going to first get the landlord to fumigate and then to test to make sure that they've eradicated the problem. But then it does recur. It's, unfortunately, it's a very difficult thing to get rid of. Cockroaches, bedbugs, all those things. They get in the walls, and you can only, you know, take them out so far, and it's almost like a virus that comes back. So it is a recurring thing. But the health department and our department, we can cite, and we can compel the owners to mitigate and eradicate, you know.
You're talking bedbugs, you're talking cockroaches. But what about stuff like, if you've got mold in a building, you've got a big responsibility to those people in that building.
Right. Mold kills.
Absolutely.
Yep. Yeah, it's no different than having a CO detector in your home. You know, it's almost an unseen, unsmellable killer sometimes, and especially black mold. And so those are things that we take seriously. And our building inspector actually does review those things when we have existing permit or applications for permits on existing buildings. But again, it's really up to the local, up to the tenants and the landlords to report these things to us. Landlords, obviously, probably aren't going to report them, but it's up to the tenants to report them to us so we can actually go and inspect and make our findings.
Just some comments or the question. Okay, at this time, we're ready for roll call. And this would be a resolution establishing a tax increment finance district for the planned, the TIF plan and development agreement for Suite Levin Ridgewater site. Ms. Thompson.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion or that resolution passes. Next, we have a resolution approving tax increment development agreement. Council, what are your wishes? Some more.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving tax increment development agreement for the TIF plan and, I mean, for the development agreement for Suite Levin at the Ridgewater site. Discussion by council. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question for Dr. Ramsden. You had stated they can't appeal their tax value for 10 years.
Correct.
The district is 15 years. Why isn't it be the extent of the entire?
I am going to defer to Attorney Scott, if you don't mind.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Member Fagerly, I think that was simply just what was negotiated. I don't remember if there were different proposals exchanged in that term or not, but I know that we wound up with the 10-year commitment.
It seems as if they're spending, invest $9 million. I doubt if the county is going to have an opinion of taxable value of $9 million. I would go to, as long as they have the tax increment, they can't challenge their evaluation.
I think we can certainly make that change. I think the one comment I would make is, in theory, any reduction in the market value, whether during the 10 years or the full term, would work against the property owner as well, because that would also reduce the amount of increment generated. But I think your point, I think your point is a good one, and I think we can make that change.
What Mr. Scott is saying is that if the property value goes down, it does impact the amount of taxes generated that eventually go to the developer. But the value of the $3 million that is to the current value of that entire site and buildings remains fixed. So that tax, that taxable revenue to the city, county, and school board remains. So if the value goes down, it does not come out of that pot. It comes out of the TIF pot. So they're basically hurting themselves by getting a value reduction.
Right. Well, the city of Wilmer and the citizens are helping them, so.
Right. Right. They shouldn't be challenging it. Right. I agree with you. I just wanted to clarify.
But the property tax they'll pay is what it's taxed at right now.
Correct.
Okay. So when they start building and increasing the value, the total value for the city is going to go up by a few million.
That's right.
So who pays that extra money then? If the valuation goes up $5 million and they're continuing to pay existing tax what they are right now, someone else has to pick it up, and it's the residents.
Oh, no, it doesn't, respectfully, it doesn't work that way, Mr. Councilmember Fagerly. Well, they're paying the tax on the existing amount of $3 million, plus they're paying taxes on the portion that is new. And as that value increases, they pay more taxes and they receive more increment, and then that would in turn shorten the life of the TIF district because we pay it out faster. There is no gap between, you know, the increase and the existing. Am I making myself?
So if we have a valuation right now in Wilmer, what are we at? Total valuation? $300 million?
$3 million. Oh, correct.
For total for the entire city?
Yep.
It's penciled out for each parcel what they have to pay. So if the value goes up another $5 million, over and above what it's assessed now, someone else is picking up that extra dollar tax.
I'm sorry.
It might be a few cents, but everyone has to pay for it.
I'm going to defer it.
So as it relates to the tax increment revenue that is generated, the development will be paying its full property tax bill as if it was outside of a TIF district. The valuation that comes on the books as it relates to the project is the amount of the tax bill that the developer will pay. What happens is those specific tax dollars applicable to that property get redirected back by the county to the city and get reimbursed to the developer as TIF revenue. The cost of serving that building, you know, ultimately, the creation of a new building within the city does expand the city's overall cost of services because there are new residents and new buildings within which the city has expanded. And there's not an offsetting impact in terms of new market value being created because the market value is essentially set aside within the TIF district and not available to the general tax base. So there is an overall increase in the cost of services to the city without a corresponding increase in tax base because of the use of TIF. But it does get spread out across the entirety of the tax base. So it's likely to be a very small impact as it relates to this project, as it relates to the overall scope of development within the city as a whole. The current amount of market value being generated by the site and the current amount of taxes being generated by the site in today's dollars will continue to be generated and collected and sent to each of the taxing jurisdictions as they're pro rata shares. So there's no loss in tax base as a result from the creation of the TIF district. There is a bit of a lack of benefit because the new taxes generated by the project, paid by the project, get redirected and captured as TIF. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it's basically what I said.
Councilmember Fagerly, maybe I can take a shot at it here. Basically, what happens on tax increment financing is the property that is currently there and that the rate that it's taxed continues to be taxed at that rate. That rate does not increase until the TIF is paid off. And so the cost of providing city services, as Dr. Ramsden said on his introductory comments, and also our representative from Baker Tilly, this is a facility that already exists within Wilmer. The street is there, the street is already being plowed. The water is there, the water is being supplied. The electric is there, the electric is being supplied. There are costs to hook that up, which the developer then must pay, and then there's a fee that's paid for those services as well. But the overall tax burden to the resident on a tax increment project is really miniscule in response. It would be like if we asked the chief, how much does it cost to provide one additional building? And a newer building is going to cost less than an existing building that has maybe more issues. Or the fire department, how much more does it cost to provide fire protection? That fire protection is already provided. So tax increment financing says, in my opinion, and in my view of tax increment financing, is that we believe in the future, and we believe the future is bright. And so we're going to say, we're going to allow this building to happen, thus the butt for test. We wouldn't make this project happen without tax increment financing. We want those dollars into the tax rolls 10 years down the road, year, 15 years down the road, whatever that is. And then those monies are going to start being collected. It's not tax abatement, where tax abatement, we collect the tax, and then the tax is abated, it's taxed to the citizenry, and then it's given back. So it's totally different than tax abatement. Tax abatement, I would never speak in favor of tax abatement for housing. But in this particular case, tax increment financing, in my opinion, is a very good tool. The housing studies show that we need additional housing. We're trying to garner more employee, high-level wage earners. We need to do that. We need to have the housing. And the question is always on economic development. What comes first, housing or jobs? Well, they kind of come together because we've kind of proven that in our report. of the city for work, and we far exceed the amount of people traveling into the city. And there is a theory that one could draw, that if people were living within the community, they'd be spending more dollars here, we'd be collecting more of our local option sales tax, and so at the end of the day, it's a benefit. That's the opinion of the mayor, and of course, each council member has their own opinion, and I respect yours as well. But I think that, you know, the cost in this particular project, I think, is much less than a project where we are having to put in the infrastructure to make it happen.
I agree, and we do need this. I'm just saying, everyone's tax bill will go up a little bit until they get off the TIF. Might be two bucks, but that's what happens. Because when you set your budget, you know what the valuation is of all the properties in Wilmer.
Right.
And you go from there.
Also, let me...
So if their valuation stays at $3 million, but the building costs, it's up to eight already, someone's got to pay for that $5 million valuation. So that's just me.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'm for it.
I understand you're for it, I just, I think, I think sometimes we get, you know, I know we've had, you know, Councilmember Nelson was very instrumental in really doing a lot of work of trying to get us as a council to understand tax increment financing, because tax increment financing, as we all, I think, agree, in the right use, is a great use. It's a great tool for a regional center. So, yeah. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselmember Blaueman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this doesn't necessarily speak directly to the, directly to the motion, but it's worth talking about since we're talking about it now, because I think it'll help flush this out for future projects. Yes, I think it can be, I mean, if we extrapolate all the math, I think we will find out that there are some added costs that, that gets, do get spread and absorbed by the population. However, I think that it's only fair, if we're going to point those out, then we also point out other economic benefits, for example. And I don't know if the numbers have been run, but maybe Dr. Ramstead could speak to the fact. I believe when we take a look at, say, the municipal utilities, our, our added cost to the municipal utilities is disproportionate compared to the benefit of the new load for the municipal utilities, and therefore, I believe that when you add that number of, of properties or units onto the load of the municipal utilities, that would then essentially go, or say, for wastewater, for example, that would go then to offset the individual household costs. So what may cost us a little bit, what may cost individual properties, you know, loaded across the entire community in one way, in another area may benefit if the utilities are already there and there's a disproportionate loading by another larger, say, an industrial or commercial or high user. Have we talked about or explored, or do you know what the effect is when it comes to, say, utilities, water consumption, wastewater charges, electricity and whatnot, and, and the effects, or what?
Well, in terms of water usage, and, I mean, they're going to pay for their water usage, so they're going to pay for their connections and all those sort of things.
Which, if I may cut you off, right now, those costs, I mean, our wastewater costs as a community are fixed.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
And so all of a sudden, we add a bunch of new units that are paying for the use of our wastewater treatment facility, which is fixed, which means the rest of us can pay a little bit less.
Right.
Therefore, offsetting some other costs that may be a little bit more. Now we're back to neutral.
In theory, you're correct. The, the capacity is there, and they're going to tap into this capacity, and we are going to get additional revenues from it. It doesn't change the capacity or require additional capacity.
Okay.
So there is no cost in that respect.
Thank you.
Just some comments or questions? Okay, we have a resolution approving the tax increment development agreement and for Sweet Livin' Ridgewater Site. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
No.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blaueman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That resolution passes. Thank you, Dr. Ramstead, and our representative from Baker Tilly. Ms. Anderson, thank you for having the courage to show up tonight, and your voice was heard as you heard a number of the council members acknowledge the appreciation of you taking your time to be here. So make sure and touch base with Dr. Ramstead, he's got one more item to present, but stick around and talk to him, and he'll get you smell, okay? Okay, with that, preliminary overview of the TIF plan for Block 25 lofts. Dr. Ramstead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, just for information, I am bringing Block 25's TIF proposal to you for consideration and seeking support for the continuation of the TIF creation. The tax increment district for Block 25 lofts is a multifamily housing project located on Block 25, which is across the street from Quick Trip. TIF will be used to offset the costs of site acquisition, environmental remediation, utilities, stormwater controls, paving, lighting. Total project costs are about $10 million, and the project will use existing infrastructure. Staff are using TIF administration fees to engage Baker Tilly in the TIF creation, which aligns with Wilmer's Finance Department's use of the same. The TIF development agreement will also include the new standardized property maintenance plan for compliance with city maintenance and snow removal requirements. After this TIF introduction to the council, staff would continue to work with the developer. Timeline for this particular project, after some new discovery today, is going to be extended. It's not going to, the project may not happen as quickly as we initially anticipated. There has been some environmental discovery on site. Nothing that's going to derail the project, but it will extend it, because they will have to join, they will have to do a Phase Two. Then they will have to join probably the voluntary inspection and cleanup program with the MPCA and go through that process. Ultimately, in my 10, 12 years of experience with HUD projects doing the same, is the site is basically cleaned out to the extent that where the project is contained, vapor barriers are installed, and venting systems, whether passive or active, are also installed. They don't make you, you know, dig the site down, you know, 300 feet and take everything away. So the, the discovery is a small petroleum discovery, and it was from a recorded petroleum accident on the neighboring, on the center site. So they just need to document that and discover what the mitigation requirements are by the MPCA, and ultimately get their, their non, their non-association letter from the MPCA for, so that becomes a clean site from that point forward. So with that, we are seeking council direction to continue the TIF creation, and I'd like to ask Director from the EDC to speak a little bit in support of the project, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Backman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, I think in light of the additional petroleum that was found on, I believe, on the northwest corner of the property, likely, I would suspect that the environmental remediation budget will go up. And so I think we will have a discussion, conference call with Tom and Dave and so forth to, as well as Ted, the developer, to talk about some next steps on that and see if there are some grants out there, or if we have to look at some, running some new TIF calculations, so.
Dr. Ramstead?
The great news with this is we knew it was a tough site to develop in the first place, and we're going to get the site cleaned up. So with that, Tom, did you have anything you want to add?
I can just speak real quickly. The proposed Block 25 project is being considered for redevelopment TIF district. So it's due to the site conditions of the property. The property has to have improvements on it. The legislature doesn't want us to throw a greenfield site in and call it a redevelopment property. It has to have buildings and parking lots and other improvements on it. And then more than 50% of the buildings, in this case, the one building that's on the property, has to be deemed to be structurally substandard. So we'll be working with city staff to qualify that property or determine if that building qualifies as structurally substandard. And then the other requirement with a redevelopment TIF district is that 90% of the TIF dollars that are generated by the project go remediating the costs that allow the property to be considered blighted in the first place. So there's a very direct use between the tax increment dollars that are created within redevelopment district and the project costs that they're funding. Land acquisition, remediation, site cleanup, public utilities adjacent to the site. So there's a real specific nexus between the need for TIF on the site and the ability for the site to be created as redevelopment TIF district.
Dr. Ramstead?
I would just like to add that for a redevelopment district, there is no affordable housing component to that. It's only when you do a housing TIF district where the 20, 40% of affordable housing calculus comes in. So on this one, they're just going to provide the 5% that's required by the Renaissance, so at 80% AMI.
Okay. Thank you. And so what we're looking for is council direction for staff to either recommend continuation of the TIF creation process, to decline continuing on the TIF creation process, or to request additional information. I think we received some additional information this evening, but counsel, I think they're looking for direction from us and a discussion from us as far as how we want to proceed with this project. So, Councilmember Osmas.
I would like to see us continue with discussions, if that means we have to look at different TIF amounts, but to make this feasible to go forward. I just, I like the look of this complex, I like the location, I like the green space on there. It will make that space and that avenue coming through town beautiful, and I think we need to do what we can to improve that piece of property.
Second.
Okay, so you've got two people saying that they support it. I'm not hearing anybody speaking against it yet, so I think what we're looking for is that you continue working on the TIF creation process and then bring back the findings that you're finding. Is there anything else specifically you were looking for?
That's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members. Appreciate it.
Do I ask one question?
Certainly, yes, absolutely.
Under the VIC, would they be testing soils under, during construction?
Yes.
That's when they'd be doing this?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Is there any soil testing before construction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then there's, there's air testing afterwards, too.
That's the testing we're talking about?
Yep.
Okay. All right, and the groundwater as well, correct?
Correct, yeah. They want to know where the water table exactly is and if there's contamination in the, in the water table.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else have additional comments before we move on? Again, on behalf of the mayor's office, I fully support this project. I think this project is a nice addition to our downtown. I think when you come into town, similar to what Councilmember Osmas said, when you come over the bridge to see that nice building will really look great for us. You know, when we were going through the interviewing process for our new city administrator, one of the concerns that our business owners had was the look on Highway 12, and this will really enhance that look on Highway 12. You know, I think they specifically were more talking on the east side than the downtown area, but this will really enhance our downtown area. So again, Aaron and Dr. Ramstead, great work on bringing this project forward and giving us something to consider and work on. So, counsel, thank you for your support in this as well. Next, we'll have a consider, consider an ordinance amending City Code Section 3-93, prohibited activities in premises of on-sale liquor license, and set a public hearing for August 2nd. This was an issue that was brought up to us at our last meeting. A constituent had came to us and asked if we would take a look at this, and staff has worked on looking at this. I remember when this ordinance was introduced, I was the fire chief at the time, and Councilmember Fagerly and I were talking about it a little bit before the meeting, and I think, Councilmember Fagerly, you were the only one that was here when that ordinance was introduced. But I do remember when that happened and some of the premises behind why it happened. So we're looking forward to staff's review on this ordinance and staff's recommendation. So with that, Chief Felton.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you for consideration this evening is introducing an amendment to Wilmer City Code to allow on-sale liquor at boxing, mixed martial arts, and other specific contests regulated by the Minnesota State Boxing Commission. Changes would include specified law enforcement and security requirements. At the Wilmer City Council member, council meeting, excuse me, on June 28th, city staff were asked to research and make recommendations regarding City Code Number 3-93 that currently prohibits on-sale alcohol at specific sporting events. Staff and the Wilmer City Attorney have worked on alternatives that we believe would allow on-sale alcohol, yet help ensure the safety of spectators, staff, and participants. We believe the essence of the initial ordinance was for, to regulate combat-related sports that have higher potential for violent crowd interactions, especially mixed with alcohol than other sporting or civic events. The proposed additions to the ordinance include the licensee shall enter into a contract with the Wilmer Police Department for assignment of at least two officers on the premise during the event and reimburse the city at the rate set annually by the Wilmer City Council for contracted law enforcement services. And in addition, the licensee shall provide at least one licensed security guard per 300 attendees, or at least one staff member per 75 attendees to help monitor the event and maintain order. The intent of that was to decrease expense to the licensee, allow options, and still provide for safety to the venue. It would be staff's recommendation to introduce the amendment to the Wilmer City Code and set a public hearing for August 2nd, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, so council, questions for Chief Felton in regards to this issue?
Councilmember Fagerly?
One person per 75, that's just like a private security, or that's the police officer?
The intent of that was that for this, a mixed martial arts event, what was proposed to take place would be to hire two Wilmer Police Department officers to be at the event if it was held in the city of Wilmer here, which is covered by this ordinance. In addition, they would have the option of either hiring licensed security where their specific job is a security contractor. If they did that, those people are licensed by the state, they're trained, they have equipment and that type of thing. They could have one security person per 300 potential attendees. If they were to, say, get, you know, if it was a, they could hire civic center staff to come in, or friends, relatives, whatever, but their job would be to help monitor the crowd and that. They're not trained, they don't have equipment, then it would be one for every 75 people is what, what is proposed there. In talking with the civic center, if it was held at a civic center-type venue, the civic center would have the capacity for about 2,000 to 2,500 people. That would mean that they would, besides hiring two Wilmer Police Officers, seven to eight security personnel, or if they wanted to provide their own staff to handle it that are not trained as security officers, it'd be about 25 to 30 staff members for that.
It seems kind of low for security. I could see them hiring people for tickets or ushers, you know, to the seats, but to me, you need more security than that.
Sure.
I mean, when you go to Moondance Jam or some other festivals, you got security people all over.
Sure. Yeah, part of what we were trying to do here, you know, this is kind of an unknown. We were trying to weigh the cost for, you know, that would, the licensee would incur with, you know, trying to provide safety there, too. So this is a, an idea that we came up with.
But for me, it's more safety.
Sure.
For the people going there, so.
Sure. You have a proposed adjustment to that number?
Well, I don't, because I'm not in that field. What would you do if we wanted more security?
You know, it could be changed, instead of one licensed security guard per 300 attendees, could be per 200. If it was an event, just a staff member, it could be for every 50 attendees versus 75. You know, the more eyes and ears that monitor the crowd, or, you know, people that act as like bouncers type thing, they don't have the security officer licensing or equipment or anything, but that would be, in essence, kind of what we'd be looking for.
So they all wouldn't be licensed to carry a gun?
No, even, even the licensed security guards may not be licensed to carry a firearm, but they would have other training and be licensed by the state in the private security realm of licensing to, for use-of-force training and things like that.
Okay. Well, I'd prefer something more, so I would go on the recommendation of what the chief says. says.
Are you okay with those numbers?
Yes, and just so I have it right, one licensed security guard per 200 attendees instead of 300, and unlicensed, like, staff members for every 50 attendees versus 75. That would certainly be workable with me.
Okay. Councilmember Plom, follow up with anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would be supportive of what Councilman Fagerly is recommending. I appreciate the time of our law enforcement to overlook, overview this. I think when it comes, when it comes to this event, I know that the promoters and all of those that are putting it on, they do their well-intentioned, and they don't want anything to go wrong, but also cost is a concern. And our concern in if we are going to make an ordinance change, we've got to take that ordinance change seriously. And so I think erring on the side of safety and precaution is probably the wisest move. So I think upping the number of security personnel, if we can do it within reasonable fashion, that the promoter can still, can still handle it. I think that's, you know, we can always dial it back, but after an event happens, you can't redo it. So I would be supportive of that move.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Councilmember Osk.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just speak a little more clarification on what type of event this is compared to the reason that this ordinance was put in place to begin with? And then I'm just curious, are we, are the changes following any other communities that are allowing this? I mean, are there other examples of cities that are allowing this?
Well, thank you. From the research that I did, this ordinance was enacted in 2007, and I believe what it was from is at that time, mixed martial arts events or combat-related sports were largely an unknown. And the intent, as I gathered from reading through the materials that I found, that what the city was looking at then was they didn't want unregulated combat events coming into the city. Mixed martial arts events, like the one that's proposed, are regulated by the Minnesota State Boxing Commission, so they have certain health standards, safety protocols, first aid, referees that follow certain guidelines and that type of thing. So that part was vetted. At that time, what I, from the reading I did, the intent of the council at that time was the unknown, big unknown was alcohol. And if you remove that, it adds another safety factor to it. I did research just a little bit online to see if I could find any other communities that had anything as specific on this, and I couldn't, other than a few cities that still have a complete prohibition on the sports itself, whether it be boxing, mixed martial arts, or that type of thing. So I didn't find anything that had a blending of alcohol sales and still allowing the event, so kind of going from scratch.
Councilmember Osk, followed by O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions. One, just a little bit of background on kind of how we got here. I know in your report here, it says that you were instructed to work with the city attorney, just where that instruction came from and kind of how we got to this. Obviously, I was at the last meeting and heard the public comment on it, but just what kind of followed that. And then second question would be, what's the demand for this? Like, how many, how often are we seeing these, you know, in a typical year in Wilmer? What are other communities of kind of similar, similar size seeing as far as demand for these sports?
Sure. Regarding the instructions here, I know we did have a local, I don't know if you want to call them an event organizer, or somebody that, you know, is very familiar with these type of contests come and speak to the meeting last time. So from that, it was kind of the instructions that I gathered were to see if there might be some alternatives that the city might look at for something like this to allow a mixed martial arts contest to come to the city of Wilmer. You know, I, most of the contests like this, they are pretty popular, I know, on TV at larger event venues. And the closest that I'm familiar with of them being in the area has been like at the casinos, jackpot junction, and those type of things. I know there is quite a local following for some of these events, you know, at least on TV. I don't know how frequent these events could be here. I think they, what I gathered was there's a number of local practitioners that would like to have a local event here that they could participate in that.
Have we not had one yet?
No, we have not.
Councilmember O'Brien?
So the big question here, I think, is the alcohol. Can they make it? Can they do well? Can they have this event without it?
The current ordinance would not prohibit that kind of an event, it just would prohibit alcohol sales there. And from what that, granted, it was, somebody that's familiar with promotions that spoke recently felt that having alcohol sales would be an important part of that and able to recoup the costs. That is apparently a pretty significant cost expense to bring an event like what was proposed here. So I don't have any specific numbers, but that was the essence that I got from him.
Now, you say there's going to be fully trained police officers at this event?
They won't be participating, no. But not by choice, anyway.
No.
But the proposal under this ordinance change would be that there would be-
That's good, that was good.
There would be two officers assigned to that event at the event, at their expense.
Okay.
That right now, the city has a way of contracting police officers, whether it be for a wedding dance, or if you have a private event, that the city council sets the fee for that. And the intent of that would be they would need at least two police officers at that event for sure, along with security.
Would those officers be in overtime?
They would, and it would be an overtime rate plus that would be charged to the licensee.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Would these events be held at a civic center? Is that the plan?
I think that's the proposal for this one, although this ordinance change would also include if it was held at, you know, say, the VFW or the Legion, or, you know, some type of event venue like that.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Calment. I believe that day after the council meeting, I thought I saw on Facebook an announcement. Is there an event already scheduled to take place in Wilmer? Has the civic center been rented? I'm just curious if we could observe one before we made changes to the, to the ordinance.
You know, I remember as a kid going to the auditorium.
All-star wrestling.
All-star wrestling.
They had a Kennedy.
And you always wanted to sit in the front row. This is all before Bloodborne Pathogen and stuff, because like when you were in seventh and eighth grade, you wanted to get blood splattered on you from the boxing. So, I mean, it just goes to show how our world has changed, right? So on a more serious note, Rob, if you could answer-
Yeah, I remember the council, it has been booked. They know that they're playing the game that if it doesn't get passed, that they're still going to hold the event with or without alcohol. So they're still going to promote it.
How soon is it?
It's at the end of August.
Ms. Valiant or Ms. Thompson, is there the ability to get all of that insurance and stuff done if that happens? I mean, that's a pretty tight turnaround, August 2nd to the end of the month, like with licensing and all that, that wouldn't happen that fast, would it?
We can have a lot of the things pre-done and just ready to go once the ordinance passes and get those sent into the state.
Councilmember Osmus?
I just wanted to point out that at the time, when this was passed in 2007, it was kind of a different time and a different culture in Wilmer as well. It was before the Stingers came, and it was a big deal when the Stingers started that we allowed alcohol at the stadium. Same thing with Bon Spiels at the civic center. That was a big change for Wilmer, to allow alcohol at the Bon Spiels. So there is a little loosening of the standards, I think, and of the culture of alcohol at events. But saying that, this is also a different kind of, of an environment as well with the violence and, and the crowd that would come to this type of an event. That then gets enhanced with the amount of alcohol. So I do like the added eyes, added security, because we want people to come and have fun, but it needs to be safe.
Councilmember Plom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, fully agreed. I have to be, I have to be that guy to play devil's advocate, but I do, I also remember, I wasn't part of the council, but I also remember the year, the time period at which that was originally discussed. And I do think that positive things, while, while all the safety precautions are absolutely necessary, I think that the nature of this sport, for example, has also changed as well into more of a, I think, you know, mixed martial, mixed martial arts. Started off as barroom brawls, essentially, like loosely regulated, and I think it's, I think it's really changed a lot into more of a sport, whereas there are more kids and people that are athletes, that they train and train and train, and they do take the, they take the safety and they take the rules of it very seriously, and it's much less of a, a barroom brawl, so to speak. But, but with that said, it's also not lost on me nor anybody else. I don't believe that fans coming to watch and alcohol combined can create an atmosphere that safety is paramount. So I'm supportive of this. I hope we're able to make it happen. I understand why it's, why the time constraints are what they are. I understand that a promoter wants to be locked in and money has to be put down and plans have to be made, but then also I understand that they want it to be successful and profitable, because if it can't be, they're not going to come back and do it again, especially if they lose money. So for that reason, I'll, I'll be supportive of it, and I will, I agree that the safety precautions that were added are probably a good idea.
Additional comments or questions? You know, I think a lot of things in, I'll be a little redundant in some of my comments here, but I think a lot of the comments that have been made are very well, are very well-placed. I think one of the things that Councilmember Plom just said is that back in '07, it wasn't regulated by the Minnesota Boxing Association, and there were no rules. And I remember, I remember sitting at the council meeting when this was discussed and the conversations that took place, and, and I think at the time, Chief Colsette was the chief, and he said, "A bad, a bad combination is fighting and alcohol. It doesn't go well together." Well, this is a little bit different. It's now, it's more, it's more regulated, you know, the physicals are there for the people so that they're not going to get hurt. You know, if they do get hurt, they're going to have the background medical exams that have been done, and bad things can happen. But I think Councilmember Fagerly's comments of increasing the amount of oversight is very good. You know, I think that those should be, you know, the minimums. I certainly would not speak in favor of raising those numbers. But I think one thing that we have to look at, too, is that if we do want to promote this outside activity, you know, we're investing a lot of money in our recreation stuff and activities in Wilmer, and whether that be baseball, or volleyball, or whatever it is, we're investing a lot of money. This is another form of recreation for people and entertainment. And it's like the Stingers, it's like Rockin' Robins. You know, in 2007, if you'd went to the council and said, "Hey, we want to have a beer garden that doesn't have a fence around it," they'd have said, "Are you nuts or what?" And, I mean, now we do it for a whole month at Rockin' Robins, and it's a great event, and we all love it. Now, there's no boxing or anything that happens there that I'm aware of, but the chief might know, he's smiling, so maybe there is some that I'm not aware of. Luckily enough. But, but anyway, so, so I think opportunities to, number one, listen to our constituents, bring a concern to us. We're going to listen to it, we'll talk about it, we'll see what we can do. But then, number two, more importantly, is if there are people that wish to do this for a business and for an entertainment purpose, I know Joel Baumann is real big involved in this, you know, big wrestler out of Kirkover Murdoch, wrestled for the University of Minnesota, tremendous wrestler. And so I may have watched him wrestle a match or two, and I actually may have watched him in his MMA. I mean, just in true disclosure here, but he's kind of fun to watch. But anyways, I think this is a good move. I think, I think that we're looking then for that motion to introduce that ordinance and set the public hearing. So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Chief Felton and Rob, thank you very much. I'd say your last name, but I always murder it. I just feel terrible after I do it, so I'm going to call you Rob, if that's all right. It's not out of disrespect, so I respect your position. Next, we have our city administrator update. We'll start with Mr. Heron. John, it's, it's a bittersweet day for you, I'm sure, so I'll let you go ahead. I know you've got some comments you'd like to make to the council.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, council. Yes, it is, it is kind of a bittersweet day, and we'll talk about that after the item that we have on the agenda. So what we're looking for, staff is looking for input from the council regarding a preference for either lengthy council meeting, which would take place on August 16th, or a special council meeting the week of August 9th. The two items, as noted on the agenda, that we anticipate will take somewhere between an hour and a half to two hours, would be the review of our capital improvement plan, which lays out our capital projects for next year. It will give the council the opportunity to discuss and prioritize and understand the costs associated with the different capital improvement projects, as well as a pavement management plan. Staff is doing a very nice job in putting together a plan that's identifying what a maintenance plan, street maintenance plan would look like, what that all consists of, and what it would cost to maintain our streets. I know there's a lot of talk, a lot of conversation in the community about more funding into our streets, so when staff presents the pavement management plan, that'll give the council a good overview of what it actually will take in dollars to maintain our streets over a life cycle cost. So looking for input. If you want a long meeting on the, on the 16th, we will plan for that. And if you would prefer to have a special meeting, just to focus on those two items, staff, it's either Judy or Janelle will be sending out a meeting date to find a date that works for everybody, a date and time.
Okay. Counsel, what are your wishes? Councilmember Nelson or Plom?
I was going to request a special meeting. I think it's, I mean, the subjects are important enough to allow us to just focus on that. Whether, whether we can attend on that date or not is the other question, so.
Councilwoman Plom?
I'm okay with that. Maybe we could send out, if we're going to do a special meeting, maybe we could do like the Doodle Poll thing to find out, just to make sure that as many people can attend as possible?
That would be the week of August 9th, sometime in there. We, we have to either address it by the 16th for our budget schedule, or prior to, so it would be the, the special meeting would be the week of August 9th. And yes, staff would send out a doodle calendar to find out what day the majority would be able to make it.
Councilmember Osk?
I'm going to play devil's advocate this time and say that I'd prefer the scheduled meeting, just because I think of the concerns that both of you just raised, it seems to me when we try to schedule a special meeting, there's at least one of us, usually probably even more than that, that's not going to make it because of a prior engagement. And so in my opinion, gathering on the night that we've all committed to come together, the nine of us, seems the better option. We're geared up for a lengthier meeting, in my opinion.
Just for comments? You know, I think one of the concerns that we had when we started to go to the, everything coming straight to the council was is that our meetings would go longer. Our last two meetings, if the mayor hadn't added things to them, would have been out in less than an hour. Tonight, we're sitting at an hour and a half right now. We have to adjourn by 11:00. That would give us another, the hour and a half to two hours, Mr. Heron, that you're talking about, would still have us out of here by, you know, worst-case scenario, 10:00. That would give us two and a half hours. I don't know what the agenda's looking like coming forward, but I know that these two items are going to be very controversial and are going to be something that the council really wants to do a deep dive on. And I want to commend staff for really rolling up their sleeves. You know, you've reported to me on two separate occasions that, how impressed you've been with our engineering staff and how they've really taken this very seriously, and really have prepared for you and Leslie to review that comprehensive street management plan, which is something that, that the city's been, you know, the last time I know that it was done, I think it was 2008. And so that's, you know, it's something that, that's, that I feel has a lot of value and really needs to be talked about at a full council level, because that, it's a big number. You know, you haven't shared the report with me, I haven't saw it, and I don't want to see it until the council sees it, but, well, I do, but I'm not gonna. But at the end of the day, you know, us as council need to receive that report, and we need to- report and we need to do a deep dive on it. But I, I do think that the way our meetings have been going, I think that we would have an opportunity to do that deep dive. And I think that would be a good opportunity for our citizens to really see how the council can work a project that is really of a citywide significance and really come to the table with solutions. Because I know the nine of us, along with our staff, particularly our engineering staff, can come up with a great plan that will really project the city Wilmer forward on the street ma- maintenance pa- plan. The capital improvement plan, yeah, we have to do it, but, you know, staff, that's pretty much a staff job, but we need to take the reports, so. So, I would, uh, speak in favor of doing it on the 16th as well, so, Councilmember Nelson?
Um, I'm, I'm just going to let you know, I can't make a long-term commitment on the 16th. And it's frustrating to me to think that this council expects that there's only need to be available two nights a month to accomplish this. I would like to see us do a poll to see what could be done. So, um, you know, priorities are priorities, but there's a lot of things that we need to do that are going to require more time. And either we start earlier, um, or, or do something different. It, I, I have a concern about that. And, um, the 16th is a problem for me to commit to, um, earlier or later that night. So, um, I'll quit with that.
Well, the 16th is our regularly scheduled meeting.
I understand that, but we're going to, if we're going to add a two-hour commitment onto the 16th somehow, you're, you're changing the dynamics of, we don't even know what's on the agenda for the 19th, for the 16th either, so.
But what I'm saying is that we incorporate it into the meeting, we start at 6:00, the time we normally would start, and then we would conclude by 11:00 PM. That's what I'm saying.
And I'm just thinking that that's not a good idea to try to accomplish these things at 10:00 at night.
Councilmember Ask, followed by Councilmember Davis?
I'm just wondering if the capital improvement plan is something that could be presented separately on the 2nd.
I can visit with staff to see if it's completed by the 2nd. If it is, we could bring it forward at that time. It's like, I can't answer that question right now tonight, Council.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, thank you, good question.
Councilmember Davis, followed by O'Brien?
Thank you. Um, can we do a doodle poll and then see how many can attend? Because maybe it would work. I think it would be better to give our full attention to these items. And then if we can't all be there, then we could do it on the 16th.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Either one of these, are we going to include staff or is this just the council?
That would be at the direction of, of, uh, staff. So, the administrator would make that determination, who from staff would be here. But I would certainly think that for the capital piece, we would have our department directors here. And then for the engineering piece, we would have our engineering office here. I would anticipate we'd have our whole engineering office here for that. Would be my...
We'd have a number of staff here.
Okay. But again, that's the administrator's call on who to have here. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Butterfield?
I think this is number one concern of the taxpayers of Wilmar Roads. We need a special meeting just for that. And to show the taxpayers, yes, we hear you. We're going to commit to this and all talk about our roads.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, the direction coming from council is there, uh, I'm kind of hearing it a little bit split, but it's, there's consistency that, um, this is important, um, to see if there's room on the agenda to bring the capital piece on the 2nd, but then to have a special meeting on the street piece itself. And then to do a doodle poll of the council and staff to see who can attend that week of the, of the 9th. Is that consistent? Am I hearing that correctly? From the council? Councilmember Osmus?
I was thinking that if everybody could make it on the 9th, we would do both. If that wasn't workable for all of us to be present, then it was a matter of splitting up the two chunks. So then possibly doing capital on the 2nd and roads on the 16th. That was the way I understood it.
I would really like that, personally. The, uh, the 9th is a, uh, is a red letter day for yours truly, so. But, uh, I will make exceptions if I need to, so.
Uh, Mayor, Council, it doesn't necessarily have to be on the 9th, the week of the 9th. So, we do the two doodle poll if we want to start there. And if everybody can make then, the week of the 9th, you know, we'll push out three, four different days for that week. And if everybody can make it, what I'm hearing, we'll go with that, both items. And if, if we can't find a night when everyone can make it, we'll try and split it up between the two.
Are we okay with that? Okay, so staff, uh, staff will work on that and bring it back to us. Okay?
Thank you. Second item, uh, as noted by Mayor, is a little bit of a bittersweet day, uh, for me, truly is. Uh, it's just six weeks that the council asked and appointed me to fill in as interim city administrator. And, uh, Ms. Valiant started today, so I'm appreciative of Ms. Valiant starting today. Uh, however, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to serve as your interim city administrator. It's truly been a pro- a pleasure. Uh, it's been enjoyable working with the council. Uh, it's been very enjoyable working with staff. Uh, you know, we have a, a lot to get done in a, in a, or, in a short time, in the six weeks, there's still a lot more to do, but, uh, hopefully I met your expectations in keeping things going. Uh, staff helped with that. Uh, I want to commend staff and thank staff as well. Uh, anything I needed help with, any questions I had with different projects, with different agenda items, uh, whoever was the expert always raised their hand and said, I can answer that, I can help you with that. So, uh, big thank you to staff. And I'd also like to thank our staff over at utilities. Uh, I leaned on them to pick up additional, uh, pieces of my work, different tasks of mine as well there, so we could keep things going. So, it's truly been a, been a pleasure and I appreciate the opportunity and it was honored to fill it, so thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any comments anybody wishes to make? Councilmember Davis?
I would like to say thank you for stepping up and helping us out. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, John, you did an excellent job. Even though I was the only one to vote against you. It wasn't against you, it was about the process of the council. Because it seems like we can't agree on very much the same time, so hopefully that'll change in the near future. Thank you again.
Councilmember Osmus?
Just really appreciated the stability and the calmness that you brought to the office. Um, my understanding was that it, it seemed like it just relieved or alleviated a lot of anxiety for a lot of the employees of what direction, um, things were going. And it, you just, you came in at the right time, you did an excellent job, and I just really appreciate you stepping up and taking it on for the city and for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I would like to say a personal thank you to you too. Um, I, it's been greatly appreciated. I do think that, you know, in many ways, the utilities and the cities, the city, we are one, um, and yet we are different. And so I had the privilege and the challenge to talk to the Labor Committee, to, um, respectfully ask them to allow you to help us, which they did. Um, and I think it also brought to light, um, the need for us to work together in the future. And I think that your stepping up and being our interim administrator will help us moving forward with that relationship between the utilities and the city too. So, I just want to say thank you to you, but also to the Utilities Commission for allowing you to do it. So, your plate is full, I know that. Certainly wasn't that you didn't have things to do, but you agreed to do it, and, uh, for that I'm thankful. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ask?
I have to say thank you as well, John. I just so appreciate the leadership that you brought to the city in a time of great need. Uh, I'm glad that you continue to, to serve the people of Wilmer as you go back to municipal utilities and, uh, and do give them a thank you from all of us as well, that they were willing to, to, to make this work, um, for this time, and, and thank you for all you do, um, for the residents of Wilmer.
Councilmember Ryan?
Also, thanks a lot. I mean, it was just unbelievable how you stepped up and helped us out in critical, critical time. And then the, uh, my personal is being your liaison with municipal utilities, but just fantastic. You have been so easy to work with. Thank you.
You know, from the mayor's office, uh, you know, when we first started having these conversations and, uh, when Councilmember Nelson told me that, uh, her and, uh, Councilmember Ask had, uh, were going to go and have a conversation with you, I was kind of going, oh, I hope he says yes. Um, and of course you did, because, uh, you see the, you see the, the picture. Um, the picture is not a snapshot of a building, of a location, of a work group. The picture is of the whole community and the whole community being vibrant and working collaboratively. And I think what we've heard from the council here tonight is that's exactly what you brought to the table, is the collaboration and the willingness to do a deep dive and look at things. And I remember when, uh, Mr. Olkins and yourself and myself sat down and, and I'd said, you know, I really, this year, I really want to look at this street plan. And Steve kind of looked at me and, you know, Mr. Mayor, you've been here before and you, you know, you got beat up pretty bad over it last time. You're sure you want to go there? And, uh, and you said, you know what, I have a plan. Let me, uh, let me use staff and put a plan together. So, your visionary leadership is going to take us to the step that Councilmember Butterfield said. Our constituents want us to address streets. And it was your leadership that took it off the shelf and put it forward and developed that plan. So, uh, we'll be forever grateful to you, uh, even whatever happens with the outcome of the study. Uh, but, uh, I also want to thank the commission. Uh, you know, I talked with, uh, Commissioner Mattern and, uh, mentioned to him that we were going to be trying to do this, and he goes, Mr. Mayor, you can have them for four weeks, but that's it. And then we came back and said, how about another week, uh, another two weeks? And he said, well, yeah, but not any longer than that. And, and then we went back and said, well, how about if we had another two weeks? And so, uh, so the commission was, uh, as they always are, um, they look at the big picture. They're not looking at their feet, they're looking at the horizon and above. And so, that doesn't happen without leadership. And that leadership comes from you, John. As I said to your employees last week, uh, when I thanked them for the sacrifice that they've made of allowing you to be here, uh, it's heartfelt from my, from, from, from myself, from the mayor's office and from me personally, the sacrifice that you made to this community, uh, to do what you did. And so, I know you're a humble guy and you don't like all this praise and you don't like all that, but it's well-deserved, uh, friend. You are a great asset to the city, Wilmer. Uh, we're very fortunate to have you here. Uh, the leadership that you provide to the utilities was exemplified simply by the work you did, uh, here with the city. So, thank you very much. I do appreciate that. How about a round of applause?
Thank, thank you. And I'll extend your sincere thank you to the Utility Commission at our next meeting as well, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then we have one, one item left. I'd like to turn that over to our city administrator, Leslie Valiant, to follow up on some, um, interview discussion and questions that the council had at that time, uh, with Leslie. So, Leslie?
Ms. Valiant, welcome.
Welcome, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
How was your first day at work?
Whirlwind. It was good though, it was very good. Staff is wonderful, as I had imagined they would be, so we're, we're shaking it out and we're getting it all together, so. And I do want to thank John too for putting that capital improvement plan already together. You know, as we talked in my interview, that was kind of one of the things, uh, you know, that I had mentioned in the department head meeting, that I thought was important, that the city went forward with. And lo and behold, it's on its way. It's perfect. So, good. Um, the one thing we also talked about was, uh, the hiring of the assistant city administrator. So, um, over the next 45 days, I'd like to take a look at the hierarchy and that and see how we can fit that in, kind of shake out maybe different departments that maybe that this assistant would take over or look at more, that kind of thing. So, that's the plan. We'll present something within the next 45 days or so. Not much more over that, so that's all I've got, but, you know, it's been a pleasure. Looking forward to tomorrow.
Sounds great. I know you were working on trying to schedule meetings with each individual as a council member, and I know that, uh, your plan is to get that accomplished here in the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
And so, um, appreciate that, so.
And I've been meeting with a couple of staff here and there too, so.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Council, any questions or comments for Ms. Valiant on our first day?
Welcome, thank you.
Okay, sounds great. So, um, with that, uh, thank you very much for your report. With that, we'll go to community pride announcements. Uh, Councilmember O'Brien?
Mr. Heron. Whoops. We'll let that go. Mr. Heron, do you want to step back there for a minute? Community pride, you and I had a great discussion about, we're talking about power outages. And then you told me some numbers that were absolutely unbelievable. And, I mean, so much being so proud of the staff and your whole crew over there. And those numbers are just incredible. Do you want to share them? You, I'm sure you remember. I have them.
I remember where you have them. I can open them up, I have them on my computer, but it takes...
I got it right here, if you want me to...
Okay, go ahead, go through.
I, I was just going to say that the, uh, just to shorten it up, the ASAI, ASAI average system availability between January 2020 and, excuse me, January 2019 and December 2019 was 99.999%.
Wow.
That is a credible number. And then between January 2020 and December 2020, it was 99.9957%. And then you told us the numbers, uh, outages was averaged two minutes?
Cost, our customer base, correct?
Yeah, it's just incredible numbers. I just wanted to share that with the council.
That's what Councilmember O'Brien is, is referencing and appreciate it. Councilmember O'Brien, uh, is our reliability, uh, stats that we have to report each year. And we take a lot of pride in that over at the utility and keeping the lights on. Uh, we spend a lot of money investing in the future of our system so that we can do that. And when we talk about the nines, the four nines, we always strive to be above four nines, which is 99.99% of the time the lights are on. And, uh, we almost hit five nines, uh, the year before. Uh, this last year, we had a major, uh, outage, uh, that caused our, our reliability rating to five nines, uh, just slightly underneath the five, and we still ended up at four, so. Yeah, no, commend staff for the nice job that they do. Uh, that has to do with our system reliability, investing in the system, and also dedication of our staff. Uh, you know, they all have a very, uh, short response time, so that after hours, when they do have outages, uh, they're able to respond in a very short duration of time and, uh, get the lights back on. So, yes, thank you, Councilmember O'Brien.
Councilmember Osmus?
That's okay. Um, I, you can sit. I feel, I feel like I'm one, I'm a Debbie Downer here. I'm just like, I have a question, and it's not community pride. My question was about the three alcohol violations that, um, we had three businesses that failed. And so, I, I just thought normally, now that we don't have a committee structure, they would have had to go in front of Public Works, Public Safety to explain what had happened. And so I was just wondering, um, what, what happens with those three now? Are they going to have to come to the council? Did we readdress the policy on that when we got away from committee meetings?
Not that I know of, did we? Chief?
Thank you, Councilmember Osmus. I can speak briefly on it. Is that, uh, it's kind of a spoiler alert, we haven't completed all alcohol compliance checks yet, so. Anybody who sells alcohol, that puts you on notice, whether you might pass or not, but, um, that's all right. Uh, but, uh, majority of the compliance checks have been done. There were three businesses that unfortunately did not pass. Um, that information was going to be forwarded to the city clerk's office, and as it stands right now, with, with not having a public safety committee, that they will have to be addressed, uh, at the council here, so.
The council could choose to set a subcommittee to address that, could they not? Mr. Scott?
Yeah, mayor members of the council, I think there's a couple options, you could just have them come, anyone who would ordinarily have gone to a committee could come before the full council, you could convene the council as a committee of the whole, and essentially, that's the same thing, you could also establish a separate committee for that specific purpose if you so chose.
Okay, so we could either do it prior to a council meeting at a separate time, or just have them come to the full council?
Sure, yep, any of those would work.
So, counsel, that's something for your consideration, staff, Ms. Valiant, if you can work on something that could come to us for the next meeting on how we could address that. Okay, thank you. Additional comments? Okay, I have a couple of community pride events, of course, have to really hats off for Rockin' Robins, for those of you that were able to attend last Tuesday night. I guesstimated someplace between 3,000 and 3,200 people in attendance, a very nice event. If you were there, you saw that the crowd was almost to the edges of everything they have, so I did talk with Mike, and he was going to, they were going to have a meeting this week with staff, and also have a meeting with their executive team that handles the Rockin' Robins piece on some things they can do to add some space. I also had a lengthy conversation with Gary Manzer, our public works director, our interim public works director, and he had some ideas on things they could do as well, so, again, tomorrow night, Rockin' Robins, it'll be a country flair, if you will, and then the next two nights, and obviously, ending up with the fabulous Armadillos, and so looking forward to that concert, which will be a great event, so, thank you to the Wilmer Rotary for the work that they've done on that, and the investment that they're willing to put into Rockin' Robins, but also into our infrastructure there at Robins Island. They did talk with me about some plans that they have for there as well, and some things that they would like to present and bring to the council, and kind of get vetted out as far as things that we could do to make that island even better than it is today, and a financial contribution that they're willing to contribute for, but those details all have to be worked out yet. The next thing I want to do is congratulate Youth for Christ. They're doing a enhancement on the corner of Second Street Southwest in Litchfield Avenue Southwest, and you'll start, see construction starting there next week. They're going to be putting in some basketball courts and some green space that'll be able to be used there. If you go by there now, you'll see it's a kind of a gravel parking lot, and it will be a public space for basketball, for pickup basketball games, those types of things, and also other events that can happen within that area. And also, I want to thank the council members that were able to make the groundbreaking on the 14th on Swanson Field, and to Rob and his staff for all the work in putting those together. That groundbreaking event went very well. Councilmember Fagerly was the council rep there, and had some good pictures that ended up on Facebook, I think, so. But with that, I'm ready to adjourn unless somebody else has something to add. Councilmember Fagerly.
Congratulations to the 90 baseball team, they played at their state tournament in Eagan and Rosemont this weekend, they took second.
Oh, wow, so, the U-10 took second, and then the U-9...
U-10 took fourth.
Oh, took fourth?
In state.
Fourth in the state, and U-9 took...
The nines took second, so, they ran out of gas.
Oh, well, it was hot.
It wasn't really hot.
Yes, good, good. Excellent. With that, an intercontinental motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.